This is the agenda of the President of the Board of Trustees, Bill Richard Brown, Cook County Illinois County State, and takes one of the fourth twenty twenty two. At this time, we will ask for the question call to roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Trustee Clayber?
Yes, former president. Please have a quick delay, please. Please leave, trustee Richardson.
The Constitution and fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God and indivisible, one liberty and justice for all.
Are there any approvals? I mean, approval, correct on any corrections of the minutes of the board meeting that will be held on May tenth, twenty twenty two? Any corrections to the minutes? Any corrections to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
The motion of the board to approve the minutes from May tenth, twenty twenty two. Could we have a second, please?
I have a second.
Second by trustee Hodges, first.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Before we open us to the public, if you have anything to state to the board, you the staff, give us your name. By state law, you are no longer required to give your address. You can give it if you see difference, you don't have to, but give us your name and your reason for addressing the board. At this time, I will ask for motion to open the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to open the meeting to the public.
Motion approved by trustee Richardson to open the meeting to the public. Could we have a second, please?
I have a second motion.
Second by trustee Hodges, let the clerk take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting is now open to the public for public comments. Are there any public comments? That the business license paper will call in when the appropriate time comes. Are there any public comments? I'll ask for motion to close the meeting to the public.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
The motion to close the meeting to the public, could we have a second?
Second.
And second by trustee Garcia, let the clerk take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting is now closed to the public. But in the mayor's report, I'd just like to say a couple of things. Let's be careful, you're going and you're coming. This morning, that was an accident in Lansing, and the person would not stop, so they got out their car and cut the other person with a machete.
What?
Got his door, traveled through Kamen City, and got into Burnham, and Burnham was able to take him into custody, and that was a good job. We also asking everyone if you would keep your lawns intact and, you know, cut the grass behind your fences in the lawn in the alley where we are. For some people that we have not given them notice yet, we do have some vacant houses in communities that we're gonna be working on a little bit maybe soon as well. And we are planning on having a spring cleanup, June twenty fifth, that'll be on Saturday, so there'll be maybe two or something like that. We haven't got exact time yet, so we'd like for the people to participate in that. If you cannot participate on June twenty fifth, then you can get out, I mean, on June twenty third or June twenty fourth and do your cleanup and leave it in the alley, and we'll pick it up on this Saturday. So then you'll have a couple of days to do it, so then you would not necessarily be exempt from the job. We would also ask if we could donate some paint to help out some of the seniors. I know a couple of the seniors need their fence painted, maybe the garage door or something in the alley. We may not do the whole thing, but that if possible, we kind of wanna stay off of private property as much as possible, but as long as the alleyway, it needs regular painting, that's something we might be able to do, we might be able to sit and help out. And I know one lady has a fence, but on Saturday, it needs now. You'll probably want to assist her with that, so that's all I have for a little.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Have a couple of things. Um, Stormy Township is having a day in the park for Burnham this coming Friday, May twenty seventh, from four to seven P M. here at the Village Hall outside of the park. Vehicle stickers will be on sale June first for the Village of Burnham. The vehicle stickers are forty-five for a passenger, sixty-five for a truck. Senior sixty-two and older and veterans are no charge. Senior and veterans first sticker, fifteen dollars. Any additional is by the vehicle type. On June ninth, the Secretary of State will be here at the Village Hall, Thursday, June ninth, from ten to two P M. You can do your renewal on more corrections of your driver's license, new renewal correction state I D., license plate stickers, road registrations. There's a flyer here on the table for you to pick up, and that's all I got.
And in addition to that, if we're here from ten to two P M., we would ask if the last people could come in about one thirty, because the last time we couldn't get them out of here, because people kept coming and kept coming, so we could not turn the people away, so, but that kind of worked in overtime. They might have got in trouble for that, but anyway, we took care of the people. So thank you, clerk, for that information. Your report, the public education helps save the way up there, trustee Greer.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Burnham's fire and medical report for the month of April twenty-two. There were nine calls for the fire. There were six day calls at three at night, ambulance calls, there were fifty-four that were very extremely busy. Fifty-four calls. There were thirty during the day and twenty-four at night. As you know, if you've been listening to the news, COVID is going back up. I think we have all become very lax, but it's so important to, it's optional to wear your mask if you choose to, because COVID is going back up. And the best way to prevent the COVID illness is to avoid being exposed to the virus. To help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen, wear a mask to protect yourself and others. Stay at least six feet from others who don't live with you. Avoid crowds and forty ventilated spaces. Get a COVID vaccine when it's available. Clean your hands often. Avoid contact with people that's sick. Cover your cough or sneeze. Touch frequently touched items, clean frequently touched items such as surface dating. Monitor your health data. And as you know, there's a new virus that's going around called the monkeypox. There were two case in Florida and two confirmed cases in Utah. Monkeypox is transmitted from person to person. Current community, there is no proven safe treatment for the monkeypox. Monkeypox is a viral disease. It is called monkeypox because it was first identified in lavatories for monkeys. It is not a great risk as of now, but it's something that you should be aware of, and if you know, you're gonna have lesions all over your body from your head to your toe, and they're full of fluids, so something that you should be aware of. The F D A announced its committee of independent experts that on June fifteenth, they will review the Pfizer and the Moderna application, so that they may authorize their vaccine for infants through preschool by June of fifteen. We'd like to thank everyone that came out on Saturday to our COVID clinic, and you know, we have them every month. And the vaccination clinic was a success. We were very busy. We had approximately fifty people, so it was very, very busy. June eleventh will be Burnham's first Health and Safety Fair. It will be at the Community Center on Torrance Avenue, and we will have, it will be a very busy day. We will have, there will be testing, there will be different types of information given to you, so please mark it on your calendar, for June eleventh is going to be from ten to three. Our annual garage sale again is July the sixteenth. If interested, you can start registering now. You must bring your own setup, no exceptions. You must bring your own setup, no exception. And Willie Wilson, I'm sure you all know who Willie Wilson is, he will be giving out gas soon and free food. And I understand that Peat Market on, will be one of the sites, the Peat Market over by us will be one of the sites that they will be giving out free food. As I hear it more, I will let you know. And that's it.
Thank you, trustee Greer, for your report and that information. Order of revolution and plan, and trust me, trustee.
Discussion on consideration of the taking action to approve or not approve the Cook County Land Bank Authority Terms Sheet Agreement to authorize the mayor to execute the C C L B A Terms Sheet Agreement in reference to the property addresses of one thirty-eight twenty-six Torrance, one thirty-eight thirty Torrance, one thirty-eight thirty-four Torrance, one thirty-eight thirty-eight Torrance, one thirty-eight fourteen Torrance, one thirty-eight forty-eight Torrance.
Okay, this is the property, she said, is one hundred and thirty-eight in Torrance. It's been abandoned for a few years, so the goal of the county and municipality is to try to get the properties back on the tax road, get them up and get them cleaned up and get them fixed up and whatever. And that's a necessity to the village as well, eliminate light and eyesores in the village, which we do not support and do not want, so, and at some point, this property probably be turned over to some developer, you know, that could use it for some use, and that would be the village's long-term goal, so it would cost the village some money to acquire, but on the other hand, we would intend to reverse that back and end up on the profitable side in both ways, so, trustee, you trust me, trustee.
I make a motion to approve the Cook County Land Bank Authority Terms Sheet Agreement to authorize the mayor to execute the C C L B A Terms Sheet Agreement in reference to the property addresses of one thirty-eight Torrance, one thirty-eight thirty Torrance, one thirty-eight thirty-four Torrance, one thirty-eight thirty-eight Torrance, one thirty-eight fourteen Torrance, one thirty-eight forty-eight Torrance.
Now, the motion approved by trustee Garcia, would you have a second?
Second.
Second by trustee Greer, and before the clerk take the roll, this is, this is the old school, deep better, again, where I would go is to get this process agreement signed by June the second, by June the second, so I'm asking the board to approve this tonight, so we can get that agreement signed and get it back to the county before June the second.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson? Yes.
A second? I wanna do that one. Discussion on consideration of the taking actions to approve or not approve the new business application proposals submitted by, for the shape, for the Pagan Brass Motors Incorporated, the small business will be by used car dealership, and it will be located at one forty-five twenty-five South Torrance.
Yes, well, could you spare and tell us a little bit about those things, approximately the agents of the cars that they will be in, and that sort of.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Mayor? Okay, we're about to sell it. They carry you from three thousand, oh.
The year.
And year, maybe, any year, but good quality and durable cars. And we're gonna bring work to the, to the village. We're gonna employ people and again, we're gonna spend money on the city and the village.
Okay, now, there's no access from Torrance Avenue at this location, so would there be access through the alley?
Yeah, there are two access. One go in, one goes out.
Okay.
One from the.
The street here.
Goes in, one out, go out from the other side, through the alley.
That was a car dealership recently too, right? Pretty recently, there was some of these on first.
Right, right, so, now sometime, I mean, people park there on Torrance Avenue, I don't know if they don't know that they can go through the alley, but it's really kind of dangerous for people to park there, but I have seen people park right there, and then they get out and walk into the lot, and that was with the previous owner. So at some point, it might be necessary for you to put a sign up and saying, saying go through the.
Through the alley. We're finding out doing that.
I mean, that could be a safe to have a problem. Unfortunately, people drive through there through the alley already, so some of them catch some, we don't catch some. Does the board have any questions?
Yes, hi. My question is, when a person, individual, purchases a car from you, what type of guarantee will they receive on the car?
At least one to three months guarantee.
You said one to three months?
Guarantee on the cars. It depends on the year of the vehicle, the miles, everything.
And they would buy their own insurance.
And there's a, a right for them to buy insurance. If the car break down, there's insurance that can cover them to fix the car for them.
You sell your insurance also?
Yes.
Cover the car, so how much would that be after that?
Um, average, average ninety-nine dollars, one hundred and twenty dollars, average.
So when will your business be open for, you know, when would you open?
As soon as we approved.
As soon as we get the.
The.
License.
Yes.
We have, I'm sorry, we have a security, because I'm concerned about used car lots, because sometimes, you know, they do have, sometimes a business, business things can go already, you know, people may break a car, that happens, but like, let's say, you try to make a deal, and somebody comes back, something went off. I've seen used car lots, somebody come back for the bad. We have somebody, some sort of security on the premise to watch, make sure things are good, or you have a plan for if that happens. You understand my comfort?
Uh, the plan we have now.
We have a security camera.
Yeah.
So when we start, we're planning of getting a, a security person can wash around the place, yes.
That's what I, yeah, cool. I'm gonna make sure, I'm gonna say, you guys too, especially.
Yeah, thank you.
And also, would you, you make sure that you're gonna keep the place clean and keeping order, to prevent Torrance, a lot of drivers in little plastic bags and all that flies all over the place, so, then I would really, really, really appreciate if you just watch on that, and maybe they do see, maybe some landscaping or something up there in front, which I think they had that before, so, you know, we are pushing beautification this year more than ever, so.
Is that connected to the gas station?
Yes.
Yeah.
One over.
One over from, in fact, it's two over from the gas station, there's one in the lane and then.
Well, my most important thing is that the consumer is very happy and be pleased with service at Torrance when they purchase the cars. You know, that's one of the most important things to me, keeping our consumers happy.
Happy, yes.
Yes. That's our goal, we.
Okay, great.
We plan to make them happy, so if we have one customer, we want them to bring ten customers.
Yes.
If we are good to one, I know they're gonna bring ten.
That's right, absolutely.
If it goes wrong, we'll be the first to die.
I have a question.
Yeah.
In future, is it possible to put a driveway in the front, just like the one by the gas station?
Well, that would be left up to I dot, and so I would suggest if you wanna, if you're making that request, I would assume to go ahead and make the request now, even if you intend to do it next year, or year after next, but I just got a real slow to make it, so. I'll put the request in soon.
With the state, you have to go through the state.
Through the state?
State room.
Okay.
Not now, but maybe in future.
Okay.
Well, I would put it in now, so that way you know you could.
Again.
Yes, yes.
So we can put it in now, right?
Oh, you're gonna. You're gonna. You have to resubmit it again, or at least you would know whether you could do it or not.
Oh, yes, yes.
Or they don't be in a hurry, so.
Yeah.
Yes, does the board have any? I perceive, trustee, because, thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the new business application and proposals submitted by Oshad or Pagan Brass Motors Incorporated, the small business will be a used car dealership, and it would be located at one forty-five twenty-five South Torrance Avenue.
Okay, so there's a motion approved by trustee Garcia.
I'll second it.
Through the light of brass motor, second by trustee Cap, let the clerk take the roll.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
My motion passed, says trustee Hodges, newest trustee, he gonna be the voice one to five. I got you. Okay, fine, that's trustee Cap.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We need, it's that time of year, we need to start planning for our appropriations, so how much time do you need, Luke, to get things together? So.
Okay, I would say the first week until after, because bills go out.
So, so the first full week of June would be good, then?
Not like, yeah, the full one, like the week of the sixth.
And we could also throw in the evening too, because we have some of them.
We've done some of the daytime too, now that I'm retired.
It's all yours.
I think we've done a lot in the daytime recently, but whatever, so.
Is it daytime, or we talking about weekday, or we talking about?
Yeah, we got.
Bruce and Hodges still working.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I would think Friday, Friday afternoon.
That's a terrible day. Now, let's try to do it that one evening that we.
Okay, maybe about six or something.
Yeah, so the Tuesday, you wanna do the Tuesday?
A Tuesday, Tuesday.
Is that the seventh then?
Tuesday.
The seventh, uh-huh, the seventh.
And then we need to set up two dates, we wanna do two dates the same week, or you wanna do one that week and one the next?
Okay, why don't we get that one done first, and then we'll kind of see when it's getting out there.
Because I have to, I have to post it.
No, it's.
I have to post it off.
Let's pick another day then, you know? Tuesday and Thursday that week?
You're not here after.
Thursday, what?
That's D A B.
No, this is the second. We're talking the second week.
First full week, I think.
We have six, eight all the night, then we have our health fair on the eleventh, so.
And I'm here.
So we're busy that, we're busy the rest of that week?
I'm just saying, just not packing all in so close together, because we're still working. We still have things to do before the health fair.
How about the following?
Yeah, we have time that we could, the Secretary of State's here on the ninth here.
So June seventh for sure? At what time, six?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't make the seventh.
I'm trying to tell you.
Lonnie was, Lonnie was hinting, yeah, that we could, we're gonna have to move to next week then, that we'll have to go there.
Okay. You got the thirteenth?
The thirteenth, then we have a meeting on the fourteenth, we could do it.
You want the thirteenth?
Yeah, definitely the thirteenth, Monday.
I wanna do it after the meeting.
Yeah, so after Monday, we already have a call by.
You wanna do it the fourteenth after the meeting? And then we have to pick another date.
Yeah.
Want to do the sixteenth then?
I can't, I can't do sixteen.
Oh, you can't do the sixteenth either?
I can go to the graduation.
How about the thirteenth, Monday?
Let's do the thirteenth.
Oh, you Mondays are bad for you.
Okay.
So we'll just set it for Tuesday?
Tuesday, yeah.
What about thirteen and fourteen?
The fifteenth and fourteenth?
The thirteenth is bad for you.
Tuesday is bad for me.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Monday nights.
Tuesday after the meet for sure.
Yeah.
Fourteenth.
Tuesday is bad.
When do we have, the sixteenth? Do you have something that that's graduation, is that you?
Now, why don't we just take the fourteenth right now, and then we'll get back to everybody. We'll get back to you. We call you. Who's on, we can get on. I'm gonna make the fourteen.
The fourteenth after the.
Okay, probably util, was that it, trustee Cap?
Yeah, that's it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Comcast for Xfinity is going up on, well, they're eliminating some of their programming. Effective June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, the subscription for Russian language channel C one R and R T R and Ros, Ros Rasia will no longer be available through Xfinity and will be removed from any Russian language packages. Effective July eighth, twenty twenty-two, due to increases in programming costs, the charge for A M C Plus will increase from six ninety-nine to eight ninety-nine per month, plus tax and fees. And on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, N D T V twenty-four seven will no longer be available through Xfinity. Similar content can be found by saying world news into your voice remote. So those are changes coming up from Comcast. From Com Ed, they have a couple of programs that you can enroll in. One of them is peak time. This is where they will notify you when electricity use during the hot summer afternoons will be in highest demand. And if you unplug or turn it off, then you will get a credit on your future bill. Also, they have something called A C cycling. It's kind of the same thing, but it's when you're using your central air conditioner to avoid putting strain on the grid. Com Ed will give homeowners with central air conditioning a monthly credit of five or ten dollars on their bills from May through October. You would have to enroll in this program, and you will be given them permission to remotely cycle your cooling on and off at peak times of energy usage. So these are two programs that can save you a few dollars if you're interested. Contact them and sign up. That's it.
Thank you, trustee Greer, for your reports, Park Recreation, trustee Hodges.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, May fourteenth, we had an open gym, hourly, we had a really good turnout. We had about, yeah, about forty young men, seventeen to about twenty-two on one side of the gym, and then we had, on the other side of the gym, we had the grammar school kids, and maybe about thirty of those over there, they were playing on the other side of the gym, so we had a good day. And we was able to get about half of those kids over to the community center to have lunch with the, with the mayor and some of the trustees. So we have a forty, we were about thirty-five or forty kids at the community center. They was enjoying it. At one point, we looked around, the kids were actually enjoying the cool stuff at the community center, they were playing basketball, and had, had plenty of food. I wanna thank you guys all for your support, specifically mayor, for the support of being there, trustee Greer, trustee Richardson, y'all patience was amazing. Thank you guys so much for your patience. Thank everybody for their support in Burnham, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to continue, keep kids busy. It's gonna take a lot of patience on all of us as a, as a crew in the city, because I really feel that if we take care of our, our youth, they'll take care of us, with things being a little more common for us, and so as we get to know the message, that's what we're trying to do. I would thank everybody for their support and their patience with everyone that went out this summer. Also, as trustee, I'm sorry, clerk, mentioned, we do have a day at the park, really cool day. It's gonna be Friday, May twenty-seventh, four to seven, come out, get some free food, music, have fun. We're gonna be passing, trying to get out there, sometimes we pass out some flyers, so you guys, those parks, it's gonna be right there, Lawhead Park over in winter, and so Friday, from four to seven, just come on out. Also, this is one of the mayor's best actions on behalf of Kamen Memorial Park District. Today, they're celebrating the hundredth year, Kamen Memorial Park District is their hundred years, so they're having a special event. I'll read the letter right here. I'm honored to invite you to attend our centennial festival to be held on July third, twenty twenty-two, at Memorial Park, Sis Twelve Wentworth Avenue, Kamen City. Twenty twenty-two marks the hundredth anniversary of Kamen Memorial Park District, and we will celebrate the occasion with the outdoor festival event, which will include live music, food vendors, games, fireworks, and various activities. The event is scheduled beginning three, and. Um, the event is scheduled to begin at three, and, uh, all attending during there will be announced, and if you want to be a part of it, just, then once you were, were RSVP, you will email bruchette@mycnpd.com, or call them at seven oh eight eight six eight two five three zero by Monday, June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-two. Um, and this is from Hollis Clark the third, who was our news executive director for Cayman Memorial Park District. We had to basically celebrate a hundred years of park districts in Cayman Memorial, which is the Southland Park, so y'all guys, you guys can be a part of that, be a part of that, and that's it, mayor.
Thank you trustee, I agree with your report.
So you have to RSVP.
Yeah.
Uh, register?
Yeah, register.
And I, I noticed on several of the events that they're having, they want you to register.
Yeah.
Some people do not have the proper, um, uh, equipment to do that.
They, they do have a phone number you can call, and also I give my number, and you guys call my number, I get you into, you know, who, okay. But we got number seven oh eight eight six eight two five three zero, you have a phone, you can call that number too. The number?
The deadline.
Oh, the deadline is June twenty-seventh, by June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. That's just to celebrate the hundred year of Cayman Memorial.
And again, I'd like to thank you for, uh, last, uh, Saturday, working with the youth.
Yeah.
I think that you worked very well with them, and they relate very well to you.
Thank you.
So congratulations, to your job well done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your party. We're having a presentation, a petition, communication, response to the memorial. I want to ask for a moment of silence for Mr. Zodi, Mr. Diane Powell, neighbor that passed away a few, a few days ago. And also the kid who was a kid today from Texas and the teacher and all that nonsense, so we can pray for the family, and we have a moment of silence for them this time. Okay, thank you. Do we have any further business? Do we have any more? We don't have any unfinished business, we don't have any good business, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
So that trustee Cap to adjourn the meeting, so we have a second.
I second.
Second by trustee Greer, we'll start next to her.
Trustee Cap?
Yes.
Trustee Hodges?
Yes.
Trustee Garcia?
Yes.
Trustee Greer?
Yes.
Trustee Richardson?
Yes.
Motion passed, meeting is now adjourned, thank you for coming.
Uh, you are.
Thank you.